Unless there's an opportunity in this section talking about the link transit, the restrictions to act.
We will come back to that then. Great, thank you. Any online?
There is none.
All right, we will now close the public comment section. Old business approval of interlocal agreement between Burlington Transit and the town of Elon to operate link within Elon. Mary Catherine, are you getting any updates?
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council. I would like to present my update of Elon's in Burlington Link Transit System. John Ando is also here, he's interim transit manager for Burlington. He's here in case you have any questions. At the previous town council meeting, the council was updated with a map of potential stops and budget projections provided by John Ando. I printed out the map, what I just made, kind of zoomed in on our area. And then underneath is the one provided by John. The stops are still as previously depicted, and we have now received updated versions of the Elon Burlington Direct Interlocal Agreement and May 1st June and fiscal year 24 cost estimates breakdowns have been included in the agenda. The Elon service is estimated to cost 3,152 for the balance of fiscal year 2023 with service starting May 22nd. And 28,347 for fiscal year 2024, and those are attached in the cost sheets. The change from May 1st to May 22nd is to coincide with the expansion of link operating hours to the on May 22nd. The updated version of the interlocal agreement was provided by Mr. John Ando and reviewed by the town manager, our attorney and their attorney. Following its review, the town council will vote either adopt or deny the Elon Burlington Interlocal Agreement to join the links. Following the approval of the form and content of the interlocal agreement, the council will be asked to consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the interlocal resolutions. After those two documents are approved and signed, Mr. Ando will present the link agreement for Elon to the Burlington City Council for approval. As I mentioned before, one aspect of being a part of the link transit system is identifying community members to be Elon representatives on the Burlington Public Transit Act by which that role will be advertised and then members will be picked as representatives. The role will be advertised and volunteers will be presented to council for appointment. Once agreements and appointments are solidified, staff and town staff, link transit staff and town staff will work together to market and promote with pamphlets, social media, things like that. We are aiming, like I said before, for a May 22nd start date. It was previously May 1st. It was changed to for the expansion. So there are two options for you tonight. The first option is to approve form and the content of the local interlocal agreement. With Burlington, you'll be going in the link transit system, or there is a option that you can define. At this time, if you have any questions for me or Mr. Ando, we're welcome. We're welcome to ask them.
Do you, so I do have a question. So John, it's been brought to our attention that we're being asked to suspend all ACTA services. It says town agrees to pass a resolution that limits ACTA services to only general purpose and disability based trips that require pickups and drop offs outside the link transit service area to or from the town limits. And Mr. Murphy from ACTA is here saying that that's not necessary. Can you just clarify that?
Yeah, the purpose of the consent was allowable under the Public Transportation Authority Act is to prevent duplication of services. The purpose of the consent, which was recently passed at the Burlington City Council, was to basically just limit ACTA's service to pick up residents within the city limits, to take them out of the link transit service area, or to pick them up outside of the link transit service area, to pick them within the city limits. Or if ACTA has any agreements such as like with the area aging, area agency on aging for the transportation of seniors, those those type of trips are excluded.
So just so I understand what that means, so in Lincoln's terms. So I have a neighbor, he is an adult, he isn't able to drive. And so currently ACTA comes to his home, picks him up, and takes him to wherever he needs to go. Are we saying that that would continue under this agreement, or are we saying that ACTA would then pick him up from his home and bring him to a now link bus stop to then access? How will that work?
It's two tiered. If that adult lives within the town limits near a link transit bus, then ACTA would not be able to do that trip if they're traveling within Elon or going to Burlington. If that user is going from Elon to let's say Graham or Ha River or Alamance, then ACTA would be able to provide that trip. Basically, what we're trying to say is that we don't necessarily, we don't want link transit operating the service and then ACTA operating the similar service to basically duplicate. Basically, we would be duplicating each other.
But if I'm the person who who needs that pickup, that doesn't seem like a duplication of service to me.
If they're going, let's say, from Elon, let's say they're going from Town Hall to Food Lion, it would be a duplication because the blue route would take that user to that same exact spot.
So let me ask a question. If this person lived three quarters of a mile from the Blue Line route, and they were disabled, how would they, they?
They would get the door to door service that we offer within that radius.
How would that be charged?
Free.
That would be free, so they would get off the route.
No, they wouldn't. We would just pick them up at their door.
Separate service.
Yeah, pick them up at their door and then take them to where they need to be dropped off. We have to provide, no joke, yeah, we don't charge our passengers right now.
It is to us though.
Oh, to you, yes, yes.
And what would that charge be based on time?
It'll be based on the time that that trip was operating.
So what you're saying is we're active charges that to that individual. We as a town would incur that charge.
On the paratransit BCS.
Why would we do that? Why would the town take on that expense? ACTA provides that service now.
There is some paratransit cost built into the budget you've given.
That's correct, yes.
So I just, I mean, that's part of the budget that they've given us.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but is that based on four riders?
We replicated based on the amount of trips that's Gibsonville. And that Gibsonville averages about say about fifty trips a month presently.
So if Mrs. Jones right now is taking ACTA, she is within the the framework of the Blue Line, going down to the hospital. Would she use ACTA or would she use?
Use link.
But that's outside of the Blue.
No, because we have the red route that goes by the hospital.
But she would still be using this personal service where they?
Still be using the door to door service, correct.
And so we would be under the burden of of informing people who have been used to taking ACTA, have to take.
We would take on that responsibility. We're already doing that in Burlington right now, and we've been working with ACTA on that transition. We have a letter and a big Q's that is going, that's being sent out to approximately 107 current ACTA clients that are transitioning to link on May 1st.
But if that same Mrs. Jones is going to social services in Graham.
We would still be able to take her as well, because that's also within the link service area.
The 107, is that throughout Alamance, Downing York?
That's city, that's within the city limits of Burlington.
Do you have any idea how many we expected here in Elon?
I'll have to defer to Peter on that.
Right now, I just, I didn't know that the ACTA limitation was on it till this afternoon. So kind of kind of shocked that was added to it. As far as joining link service, that's great. You know, that's a great service to the town. Restricting link, I mean restricting ACTA, what we're seeing, and you know, it hasn't come to fruition yet because it's effective May 1st. But there are people that are riding ACTA right now that are gonna have to leave about an hour and a half, two hours earlier in the morning to make it to work, or make it to where they need to go. And we've been doing those because they might live, they may live within three quarter mile radius of the route, but they might live 30 minutes away from a bus stop. They're still told they've got to go take a link transit bus, and that's what's happening in Burlington. I really did not see that happen in Elon. We serve a lot of people, and just because you're 70 years old doesn't mean you're eligible for the ADA service that link transit runs. You have to have a doctor's note that says you physically cannot walk to that bus stop. It's just not open to just the elderly. So what we do, and what I put together for your planner today is we do 2,000 trips in the in the year of 2022. We do 2,000 trips, 2121 is the number of trips. The the numbers I think that were provided was during the pandemic, which was a much smaller number. We provided that to to Burlington, so they could review. They asked, you know, public records, that release. We gave them that information, but using the pandemic numbers that were cut in half doesn't give a true picture of what the numbers really look like. So right now, we do 22,121 trips in the town of Elon. Some of those could potentially ride on link transit, because right now you don't have any bus stops there, so we pick up everybody. There might be somebody that lives right on a bus stop, and it makes sense for them to ride. But just understand it takes longer on the fixed route, and it takes a lot of planning. So the main thing, you know, point that I would make here is you don't need to have that restricting, that restriction for ACTA in this agreement. It's not an FTA requirement, and there's no reason to have it in there. You know, I'd leave your options open, so if you have a dangerous situation where someone's told they have to walk down a country road with no sidewalks to get to the nearest link bus stop, I'd rather see you have the option of using ACTA in that case.
I would have to clarify that link paratransit would still, if there's no sidewalks, link paratransit would be available to that use. And I guess I would, I guess I would also ask if that 2,000, how much of that 2,000 is within link and how much is that 2,000 is outside of the link service area?
I don't have the number, I don't know the number of that, but I'm gonna say the majority is gonna fall in because Elon's not that big a location. And so if now the route going through Elon, and it kind of zigzagged through, that's gonna put a lot of people within walking distance. But you know, you can go on Google Maps and put in how long it takes to get to the hospital. Now, if you get to the hospital, you're gonna get on the route that runs to downtown Burlington, you're gonna switch to another bus there to get to the hospital.
Transfer at Holly.
You could transfer at Holly Hills Mall, yes. But it is, you know, it's a great service and it'll work for a lot of people, but I just would not restrict ACTA from providing some services. And the way we provide services, we're human, human services, we've been known it for years. There's a lot of people that count on us, and you know, if they're over the age of 65, they ride our service. And again, the ADA service, I've not heard of anybody getting a ride on paratransit because there wasn't a sidewalk. Not seen that any of the paperwork or even suggesting that that can be done in our rider's guide.
Mary, one question I had, John, for you. Was this resolution required for all the other municipalities that participate in transit?
We are also going to be going to the town of Gibsonville on this one as well. First, we, yeah, we started with Burlington. Now, of course, like Peter said, this is not a requirement to participate in link. We're just wanting, the reason we're asking for this is to just prevent the duplication, so we don't have people having to pick and choose which transportation service to use when they're traveling within link.
I, I.
It's not a requirement? Pardon me, it's not a requirement?
It's 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 at your discretion if you want to do the consent or not.
Won't people have a choice?
No, no, we're giving you a choice. If you want to allow, if you want to have the consent that we're proposing, we're fine with that. If you want to just have us both operate within the town limits, we're fine with that.
So is the only section that addresses this portion is letter D consent to the ACTA?
Yes.
Is that the only portion of this resolution? So Rich, are we able to approve it with the removal of letter D under section two, if that's an option?
I would say yes.
It's a disadvantage of having the options, I mean.
Well, I know you're doing a pilot, you wanted to evaluate how well fixed route and paratransit work in your community. So what we just don't want to have is a situation where basically you have two transportation providers doing the same exact thing.
I don't mind, I don't mind addressing that. We do not try and duplicate what link transit does. If someone lives right near a bus stop and is going right near a bus stop, we're gonna, we're going to direct them to link transit. It's just there are a lot of times that, and we had a lot of people that are that are a little upset about losing the service in Burlington. Again, it hasn't happened because it's May 1st. That's when, you know, people will start complaining. And then that is a concern.
I mean, I feel like the whole goal is to help people to get to where they want to be. And by restricting ACTA, if we're not required to, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I think that having, so it's like obviously link for your everyday use, but then ACTA when not necessarily an option, because there are going to be people who maybe don't qualify under a disability, maybe, maybe somebody is 62 and they're just not as mobile as, you know, what you want to be to get that three quarters of a mile to the nearest bus stop or the nearest route. I just for me personally, I think that if we can offer both, we just have to really think about that. So whenever we are evaluating the link transit service, we also should ask for the data related to ACTA so that we can kind of factor that in.
I think that, I think that'd be a reasonable request, just so that you can see how both systems are performing in your town limits. And see if there's any potential capitalization or not.
My only concern is there was talk about you saying you would take responsibility for communicating with people about the presence of link. In this, if we take that back, will we need to add any more communication with our town of the few residents to let them know that both are available? Or that they're not gonna lose any anything from ACTA, or it sounds like that they might anyway, because you said if they're right on a bus stop, that you would probably move them in that direction. And you would communicate that to them? Would that be the case?
Correct, yeah, and that's what we've been knowing for years. You know, they started seven years ago. And if there are people close to a bus stop, we direct them to the, to the, to the nearest bus stop. And you know, if they point out some safety concerns, or if, and we look it up and say, yeah, that's, I wouldn't ask a family member to do that same trip, then we would take them.
And as far as notification, we will be sending out our bi-monthly newsletter May 1st. So you can certainly have the information about the link transit system, about ACTA in there, so that that'll go to every nearly every address in the town. There's probably a handful of them, Ken, but that would be the easiest way and the most comprehensive way of notifying people that these are the services that are available to you.
Any feedback from our citizens about this, talking about it, to use both, or is it too?
About having both running? No, I have it anyway. I don't know if he's coming to the planning office or not. You know, we've had input prior to this at our community meetings about the need for you know, for transit services. Whether people were familiar with the Service Act it provides or not, you know, I don't know that, but we can certainly work to help get that into everybody's hands. And to read it, there's gonna be something else, but at least we put it in their hands.
But to clarify one more thing, if ACTA takes them, that they pay?
Right now, our service with the pandemic, we're not charging. We would, we would charge for a general trip, anywhere from $2 to $5 for the trip.
That's gonna go, come back in sometime soon, you think, or?
Right, it's something where we need to look at with the pandemic money going away. That's what we've been.
I would think that would be a strong incentive right there for someone to make the change to link if they're having to be charged, so.
Either way, right, I mean, it's the choice of where they want to. And so in the budget that you proposed to us, how many stops did that, is the pay?
For the paratransit BCS?
Paratransit.
About 50 a month.
50 a month.
Yeah.
And that question goes back to you. How many of those stops exist today with ACTA?
As far as, well, how many are paratransit?
He's saying there's 50, his numbers show 50.
I had the chance to look it up. I mean, I was, this is the traditional time of year that I go through and, and write it down by municipality. And I know that we, that we have 2,000 trips we do. I don't know how many of them are you know, ADA assessable type trips. But I will, you know, point out there, you're just looking at the budget numbers that cost for link transits, paratransit is $90 an hour. We operate at about $53 an hour at ACTA.
And that was my concern is if we went over the amount of budget, and we're spending $90 per person.
Actually, I want to caution on that comment, because the money that you're contributing is really the local match dollars for the federal funds that we're using for the transit system. So 80% of that $90 is covered by our FTA grant.
Even if it was $30. We can subsidize one citizen $30 per trip.
But notice that it's not per trip, it's based on hours, so it's. Well, I don't even want to say per person, because it's really, that's why it's, we mentioned it's based on minutes. The buses generally spend about 18 minutes per trip within Elon. The paratransit trip will more likely spend less in Elon. So it's really based on how many minutes that bus is gonna be in the town. Hopefully, that's not complex, but that's kind of how the formula is on how we pay our contracts.
So once they get into Burlington?
Then the city picks up that cost.
So what I'm hearing is I'm agreeing with the mayor. I mean, it seems to me the the whole point of getting link was to be able to have ability for our citizens to move throughout town. And if there's no downside, as you said, as far as being able to sign this agreement and keep ACTA, I I would be in the position where I would want the most access available to our citizens, especially those that have ADA issues. And, and I just, I don't see, obviously, we don't want to duplicate services if, if they are duplicated, but I do see, listening to the two of you and trying to glean what I can out of it. I do see some differences between the services that you all are able to offer, so. I don't know, Mary.
So you said you put about 50 stops in here for the?
About, we assumed about 50 passenger trips. That would be based on the budget. Either 20, then that amount would be less.
And so we've paid less, right?
Less, yeah.
It was more.
We've paid more.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think.
There's, I just want to, one thing too, there's an incentive that we have with our contractor to carry more passengers per hour. So what we don't want to have is a paratransit bus coming into town for one person and then just leaving town with that one person. We want them to pick up people and drop off people as they travel. Picking up and dropping off people between the three communities, so that's how that service.
It must have been what prompted this change, because you, when you started, you did not have this.
We didn't, no. This was all a recent event, especially particularly in the city limits of Burlington.
Okay.
So my two concerns still are, that were brought up, were the time that people would spend on the bus, if that is a valid thing, especially if somebody has disabilities, that time and effort is, is going to be exhausting. And two, you know, well, I, I think two's actually been answered, so that that would be my main concern.
The fixed route system right now runs on a 90-minute frequency. We are doing a study to see how we can shrink that. The paratransit system is really door to door on reservation. So those trips can be as little as five minutes to as much as 60 minutes, depending on how far the person's traveling. Like if they're gonna go from Elon to, let's say, ACC, that's likely to be a 30 to 35 minute or 45 minute trip. They're just gonna pick up and drop off people. If they're going from Elon to the hospital, it'd be like a 15, 20 minute trip at the most.
Mary Catherine, I have one question that might be just a little off of this, and that is that the stop that is up on Blue Road by University. Who calculated that stop? Was that link or was that us?
So Manning on University, we gave link three options. And they, they looked at their, at their buses and the trajectory of the turns, and what was safer between that. But we wanted to be able to get close to the community right above university.
Well, that's what I was, that's my, my greatest concern right now. So just trying to figure out from a safety standpoint, are we gonna be able to do anything to help increase safety there? Because there's no crosswalks, there's no no way of navigating pedestrian traffic there. So I'm just wondering if that's something we were, we're gonna think about.
I mean, I think that, remember, this is a pilot. We're not investing in bus stops this first year. We're looking at nothing but ridership to see if this is something that we want to continue in the future. And if it is, then yeah, I think that we should address, you know, the bus stop thing. We talked about a covered bus stop. We talked about some other options. But you know, I think that keeping them both on this pilot year basis, evaluating, and then deciding what we want to do next year about this time, I think is really the best kind of next step that, you know, we could want if this, we tend to do that a lot around here, but I think that let's, let's see, see what the data says.
I'll just make one more statement and I'll be done with it. It's just that Lakey Hall, they have a van, they have, they take trips and do things like that. Across the street, they don't, so you have to walk across to get onto the bus stop. That's the only thing I was concerned. Looking at it from a safety point, that was it.
As with mayor, I mean, I think that we, with this being a pilot, we do take a look at it, do get the data out there. Because that will help us with decisions, and it may be a situation where in harmony, it works better for our citizens like that. I think, in my opinion, that's what we should do.
I think we need to be very clear in our communication. This is being considered a pilot. If you, if you don't ride it, you know, there's gonna be serious conversations about the future, so people need to use it. If this is something that I mean, continue to hear how thankful people are that we're, we've gotten emails, we've gotten calls, we've heard it during our community meetings. Now let's make sure that people use it and that they understand. If there's zero ridership, you know. If there's zero ridership, you know. And, you know, between now and the fiscal year next year, there'll be serious conversations about this not continuing. But we just have, we have to be clear in that communication, that we are taking on a pilot. This is not like implementing a new service, this is a pilot. Because otherwise, people will get upset if we take it away, and it's like we had. Six riders for six months. I don't know that, you know what I mean? Like, I want, I want to be very clear to people that. Set that expectation from the front.
If I can ask a question um. On the 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 whole issue of paratransit. Does Gibsonville have that service? Is that part and parcel of the link? System? So we we couldn't say, oh, you know, we want the fixed route without paratransit.
A paratransit is a federal requirement.
Okay.
So we have to provide it.
So what what I've heard thus far is that it seems like we're all aligned and if we're not. Or otherwise, but. Um, it seems to me that maybe we're comfortable with. Someone providing a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with the removal of section two, letter D. I have a motion, have a second.
I'll make the second.
All in favors say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all so much. I think that that was really helpful to have that conversation, so thank you.
Very much. Um, do we need to have her sign the resolution now?
Uh, we have to update the resolution. When we do.
Um, do you wanna run away and go do that real quick, so John can take? And so moving on to ordinances and resolutions, um, we can scratch letter B, is that correct? Resolution to restrict ACTA services? Do we need to vote to remove that from the agenda or? I mean, to remove that section from the.
It would definitely.
Okay, do I have a motion to table letter B, resolution to restrict?
Table letter D.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Great. So letter A, resolution to authorize the town manager to enter into, this is just a resolution. To authorize what we just discussed?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that resolution that is in our agenda package? Do we need to remove the section that? Under. One, two, three, four. And five? Uh, it seems like this resolution needs to be rewritten again. There's several mentions of ACTA in it, unless I'm looking at the wrong one.
It was the resolution on ACTA which.
Oh, got it. I'm sorry, I was, I'm too far. Do I have a motion to approve um the resolution to authorize the town manager to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Burlington to provide regional public transportation service? Have a second? Yeah, Mark made the motion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, letter C, budget amendment number five to initiate link transit service.
This is to in. These are expenses by five thousand seven, seven. And sixteen dollars uh under registration contract services for. One in here.
Yeah, I have a thirty-one fifty-two packet.
Sorry. So thirty-one fifty-two. You got it in the packet?
In the online packet, it's thirty-one fifty-two, and then the one in front of me says fifty-seven sixteen.
The first one, thirty-one fifty-two.
What's that number a lot better?
Yeah.
That will take us from May twenty-second through the end of the fiscal year.
I have through thirty-one fifty.
Fifty-one seventy-six, the the previous. Fifty-seven sixteen, that was the previous amount?
Yes.
And then we adjusted that? Okay, is that because we're delaying it to the twenty-second rather than the first?
Uh, well, the budget numbers changed, yeah. And the the annual cost changed as well.
Online packet, it's the thirty-one.
Well, and then also on our work.
So do I have a motion to approve budget amendment number five to initiate link transit service in the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars?
In this expenditure, there's an equal uh. Use of our fund balance of thirty, thirty-one fifty-two as well to match that expenditure.
So moved.
That Randy?
Yes.
Second, second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Carries. All right, moving on to new business, we have major development plan twenty twenty-two dash zero four, major development plan for Park Northwest. In our presentation. Sean.
Evening, Mayor, members of the board. Um, so the. Item you have before you tonight is petition MDP twenty twenty-two dash oh four. Um, this will look familiar, as this is the Park Northwest project, request by the applicant Green Heart Corporation. Um, for the major development plan approval for the conditional rezoning that the board already reviewed. Um, as this site will look very familiar to everyone, um. The Park Northwest misuse project was approved at that intersection of University Drive and Shellerford Court. Um, for a conditional rezoning by the council on August the ninth, twenty twenty-two. Um, the developer did submit an annex, a voluntary annexation petition to the town for this parcel, and it was approved by the council. At their February fourteenth meeting, and it was recorded in the registered deeds office on March second, twenty twenty-three. So the project here before you tonight, again, is for major development plan approval, um which is a very technical approval. Versus the original plan that was here before you for the conditional rezoning approval. Um, so as part of major development plan approval, it is basically asking, does this plan meet our code? And any waivers that was approved when the original conditional rezoning? So the Park Northwest project, if you remember, was originally approved for a maximum of two hundred single-family dwelling units. Um, two hundred multifamily units and one hundred thousand square feet of non-residential space. And the proposed major development plan that you have in front of you and on the screen. Um, depicts one hundred and nineteen single-family dwellings. Sixty-six townhomes, and that gives you a total of a hundred and eighty-five single-family homes, both detached and attached. The plan also depicts fifty-four thousand five hundred square feet of non-residential space. On the first floor of the three mixed-use buildings. With two hundred apartments also located in those buildings. Um, and I think everyone kind of remembers, um, the mixed-use buildings are these large buildings here flanking the intersection. And then the one over here at the corner. There will be approximately seven hundred and seventy-nine parking spaces um throughout the project. It will also include twenty-three point six, seven acres of common open space, which includes a public square. Um, a pocket park and a pool that is very hard to see, but it is adjacent to this building right there. The project will be constructed in three phases. Um, and the phasing lines are a little bit difficult to see on the map in front of you. Um, but phase one is essentially this area over here, it's the larger single-family lots. Phase two is kind of like the area in the middle, it's your single-family and your townhome lots. And phase three are the mixed-use buildings. Phase three will also be divided into three subphases, three A, three B, and three C um for each building. Base three B will also include the off-site sidewalk construction along North Williamson that's heading south toward downtown. So the developer has submitted um. Two proposals for that, because we have not yet ironed out which side that sidewalk would be located on. Um, so he's depicted it on both the eastern side. Of North Williamson and also along here on the western side. Um, and the exact location will be determined of prior to construction plan approval. The landscaping plan for this project um states that all LDO requirements shall be met. Um, the TRC committee reviewed the landscaping plans extensively. Um, in particular, the proposed street trees that were planted next to the mixed-use buildings. Um, and the fire chief who's here tonight, along with the deputy fire marshal, um did have some lengthy discussions about the trees. That were immediately adjacent to these buildings right here, um as it could impair their access to the buildings. Um, so they requested that those street trees have a maximum height of twenty feet. And the TRC committee did approve that modification, which is allowed by the LDO. Um, and the applicant included a note on the plan stating as such, and so again, it would just be those trees adjacent to those buildings, so they could have adequate fire access. Developers submitted an elevation of each of the mixed-use buildings. Again, further review of these elevations would also be. Handled during the construction plan review. Um, this is your first building kind of off to the left of the site. Building kind of on the right as you enter, and you can kind of see right now, this is an L-shaped building, so right now, they're just kind of showing the blank wall of the side of the building. And then the third building at the intersection, um and as you can see, it's a combination of different masonry-type materials. That are all compliant with our LDO. The envisioned Elon, and that should say twenty forty, not two hundred and four, comprehensive plan identifies the site as neighborhood living. And conservation with a portion um of the neighborhood living lying within the mixed-use overlay, which this plan meets. The plan also goes on to meet several goals and objectives um outlined in the plan. So the TRC reviewed this plan extensively um at four different meetings. Um, all of the items that were mentioned during the TRC meetings were addressed by the applicant and his engineering and architectural. The TRC committee approved the major development plan. Pending final approval, that's still forthcoming from NCDOT. And speaking of it, I did receive an email from NCDOT on March twenty-second with their approval for. Control of access modification, um which in layman's terms, I think is the driveway location. Um, so DOT approved the two um access points into the subdivision for the project, which we were waiting on. The recommendations. Planning staff recommends approval of the proposed major development plan MDP twenty twenty-two oh four for the Park West, Park Northwest mixed-use project. As the proposed plan meets the requirements outlined in the approved conditional rezoning plan and the town's LDO. At the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three planning board meeting. The board voted five to one to approve the major development plan. Um, we did have one board member, Diane Gill, that voted against it, and when I have a member vote against, I typically ask for a reason, so I can present that to council. Um, Ms. Gill stated that she voted against it for the following reasons, because the new LMO had not yet been adopted. Um, she did not see any bike lanes on the plan, there is no plan on how to handle the traffic. And she felt that the project was too close in general to the downtown and would negatively impact the downtown. Um, if you have any questions with me at this time, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, several folks from the development team are here, except for Jeremy. Um, who's on vacation, and also the architect and the engineer are here as well, if you have any questions for them.
What concerns do the DOT have about the um the locations of the driveways? Are there any concerns? I still pointed out some concerns about traffic. So what, what would you urge you that? Patients, driveways would not be.
So my understanding from this um is University Drive has been limited access for fair. So when that site was originally approved for driveways, my understanding is they were in a different location, it's that correct? One of them was in a different location, so they had to apply to NCDOT to shift that driveway. Um, and they had to ultimately approve that um new driveway location. Um, so it it took a while, but it went through the review process. Um, Ms. Gill, during the planning board meeting, had a lot of great concerns. I told her that. Probably should have been brought up during the conditional rezoning period, because that was when those concerns should have been addressed from the project was originally approved. Because that major development plan, the project has already approved and vested, so really, at this point, all we're looking for is. Does it meet the code specifications? Approval has already been granted back in August.
Just out of curiosity, she's no bike lanes, but what was she referring?
She wanted bike lanes on University. But the good news is Ms. Gill is on our multimodal um transportation plan committee, so I told her to please be very active on that plan, and let's. Address where we need bike lanes, sidewalks, and transit throughout town.
Since you've been working on the the new LMO. Is there anything in this plan that once we uh adopt our new LMO that isn't congruent with each other?
So I don't know that that process is far enough down the road to answer that question appropriately. I will state that I do feel fairly confident that this major development plan process will be removed from the new LMO. So had this project been submitted, say, next year, it would not be coming back for you for this technical review. A technical review of this nature is typically handled at staff level in TRC. Um, because you've reviewed it and approved it originally through the conditional rezoning process. Um, so I do feel fairly confident in saying that this process will hopefully disappear in the new LMO, but yes, the other chapters are still in various forms, so.
It's kind of hard to say what it would be.
You can sense it was conditional zoning, which essentially put all the standards on the table.
In the instance, when you're going through the. Slide, you're like, this is all up to with our LDO right now with the brick and mortar and.
Architectural standards, the draft are very similar, so I think architecturally, the buildings would look like what the new LMO is also promoting. Um, I'm trying to think, we really can't regulate single-family, the architecture on single-family, because general statutes has taken that authority away from us. Um, however, again, as Rich said, this went through the conditional rezoning, so they gave kind of extra to, when they came through the table, going through that process. Um, parking, I feel like it would be somewhat compliant, but again, it's. There's a lot of moving parts to the new.
Currently.
I I have two questions, I'm not sure you've answered it or or one of you would answer it, but uh. Um, and it might not even be an answerable question, which is fine, but uh. Do you have kind of a timeline of the phases? Um, is there a a a at least a rough timeline in terms of how how soon we're gonna start to see things and that? How long certain developments will, most phases will take?
I'm gonna let one of them, because that was asked at the planning board as well. Um, so I'll let one of them kind of address the timeline.
Good evening, good evening, there are sharp council members, uh Tony Tate, uh PMT LA Associates. We don't have a presentation, a formal presentation planned, so as far as the the timing goes. Construction is is set to begin in May or June. We have submitted the erosion control planning integrated plans. For approval, they're not quite approved yet, but they're processed. For approval, they're not quite approved yet, but they're processed. CDs are in. Being prepared and going through approvals. Can't really start till after that. So that's going to be forthcoming.
Construction drawings.
Construction drawings, so and so we'll have houses coming out of the ground in a year.
But now will phase two even start before phase one is finished?
It it will. They're going to kind of start with phase one with the grading process. And then as they move through, they're going to.
Oh, I see.
Out of phase one into phase two so that. There's a lot of economies in grading and cutting bill and balancing the site, those kind of things. One phase to the next.
You're planning to start on the left of this map where the larger single family homes.
That's where the that driveway is in the exact location where D O T. Said it for since the fourth when they did control of access. The easternmost access was moved a little bit to the east to line up with a major. Ridge line that runs through there. Where D O T had it, they admitted it. They just put it somewhere because they needed to locate it somewhere. So they agreed with where we put it that going in on the ridge line that grade would be the most appropriate place. So that's. Why they approved that.
Yeah, we're really one more. Do you have a really quick question? The placement of the pool, this looks like it's right next to the road according to the technical drawing here, but I is it? Is there still a pretty good? Distance and stuff so that people.
The edge of pavement is is a pretty good distance off of. There's a lot of distance between the edge of pavement and the right away. So it will be a pretty good distance.
Just from the plan, it just looked like it was really close to the road. So, okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. The question, I think you said originally the proposal was two hundred homes and now one nineteen. So it reduced the number of homes. What did you have to do? Did you change the lot sizes? Or did you basically create more green space?
One nineteen was just.
Two hundred single family. Hundred eighty nine.
Right, I think it's one something.
Yeah, the townhomes are included in the total number. So that's only a fifteen unit decrease. I think in the rezoning process, we were trying to aim high. So that we had the ability to to drop back if we needed to. Obviously couldn't add anymore lots, but. The the layout and the plan. My knowledge is exactly like the plan that was put forth in the rezoning process. So. It's it's vital to what we proposed.
Okay.
As it came through.
And the last question I had was, there are three phases in this project. If obviously we don't know what future holes, but if economy chains where. You couldn't complete two and three, what does that do? The conditional zoning that we granted? Does it affect that?
So the conditional zoning runs with the parcel. And once they start phase one, this plan is vested. So say then they couldn't come back and complete. The remaining portion of the site and they wanted to sell it to someone else. They would have to come back through the conditional rezoning process to remove that plan unless they want to build that specific plan. Because it would then run with the land.
I would add that in response to the the planning board members comments. About access and walkability and so forth. You know, we're providing sidewalks on both sides of all streets. We have the sidewalk that's leading to the intersection and then to downtown. And as far as a comment about transit. We provided a bus stop location within the site. Should the transportation system want to go do that, we've provided the place for the stop there. So. I think we've, except for the bike lane on the university, and I'm not sure that. D T is looking forward to that, but outside of that, I think it would be really satisfying.
And just for a clarification, that back to the, you put the sidewalk on both sides of the road because you weren't sure. What what's the basis of the not sure? Is that something we're doing or is that something they're doing?
So originally they wanted it on the western side of the North Williamson. The same original property owner. So they could work with the property owner to get an easement kind of me under the sidewalk through. From a town perspective, we really like to see it on the eastern side to connect into that existing sidewalk. But they would not have the same conditions working with the property owner. So they would have to keep the sidewalk within the road right of way. So we're still trying to assess the conditions out there, which would come during the construction plan, how much grading. What the sidewalk would look like, would be able to get it within the right away. Because I know they think there's a ditch out there as well. So how that would all work?
Is it a three foot or five foot?
And are you looking for about this evening?
I originally put the the second meeting because I knew you typically like to vote at the second meeting. If you wanted to vote. Major development plans are unique, especially this one, since you've already seen the project before. So if you feel comfortable voting, please feel free to do so. If you would want to wait to your next meeting. Do that as well to the council. But again, you're looking at it to see if it meets code.
I just have one quick question. Since the chief is here, in addition. If was there any additional concerns that you have besides the trees? And I really appreciate that. The developers were willing to work with you on that. But was there anything else?
We have no reservations. Except to Oliver.
Thank you, sir.
I'm comfortable with what's made of your.
Right. Do I have a motion to approve the M D P twenty twenty two dash zero four?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'm second that mayor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I want to thank you and the planning board for the. Ms. Gill's pressing our concerns and we'll we'll take it.
And just knowing going forward, if you ever get opposition from planning board, I will bring you the reason.
Yeah, I like that. All right, moving right along, letter B, set public hearing date for Elon Fire District tax rate for April twenty fourth.
We talked about this a week ago. Explain that because of the the change in the tax rate. Will happen because of the rebound. You know, the the tax rate has to be has to be go through a public care process. And all three added into the county commissioners budget approval process. A couple of years ago, we asked for an increase from eleven cents to twelve cents. That hearing was done through the county's budget process. You indicated desire to do that locally. With the the new valuation of the community, the Elon Fire District. It's increasing roughly from two hundred and seventy three million dollars up to four hundred and thirteen million. So significant increase in value. The county has provided us information that would. Give us a revenue neutral tax rate. I've done the calculations. I've come with slightly different numbers. Those will be verified. Once we decide which version we're going to go. And he also gave us a tax rate of revenue neutral plus inflation factor of seven percent. What I give you information based on revenue neutral. Seven percent escalator as well as a eight percent escalator. Last week we talked to what would what nine percent inflation would look like. And that gets all into fractions of. Six, eight point seven, whatever. And the last point I made in my cover to you is that if. Since you rounded the the tax rate to an even nine cents. From that revenue neutral plus inflation factor. It does represent a an inflation rate of about thirteen percent, which. Is not far off from the fourteen percent we've seen over the last two years. That's the direction the board wanted to go. The nine cent or excuse me, the nine percent inflation rate. Added on to revenue neutral would be about three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars of revenue to the town. Eight cent is fifty four, I think. Seven percent would be about three hundred and fifty. As I said, the the zero. The revenue neutral tax rate would give us about three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars a year. Now with the the budget liaison committee earlier. And the sentiment was that the the nine percent inflation rate. Again, is doesn't come close to the two, the two years of inflation that we've had. It's a reasonable compromise. That again, would would give us about three hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars in revenue. The the idea of the inflation add on, you know, it was raised through the county process when they met with the fire chiefs. And. Really becomes a discussion point of what's what's the valid rate of inflation that we should be looking at? Is it? Your value five percent or your value nine percent or thirteen? Definition of the liaison committee is that we go with that nine percent. Could you choose to go ahead and hold that public hearing? Fourth. Our option obviously is still to utilize the the tax rate that that you settle on. Refer that to the county commissioners and they would that as part of their budget process.
So the we're going with the point zero nine or we're going with the neutral tax rate plus nine percent inflation? That's the recommendation.
Recommendation was revenue neutral plus nine percent inflation. So the nine percent rate only generates about eighteen thousand. Eight cent, right? You were three fifty four to three seventy two, right? No, it's three fifty four to three fifty seven. The the three seventy twos that we went with nine cents. I'm sorry, I thought you asked nine percent. Well, I'm looking at this nine percent, nine percent rate. It's only going to generate. That that's in. The nine percent is not here. That came out in discussion. That's a nine. That's if you rounded the eight point six eight, whatever it is. Up to nine cents. Third to last bullet. That's what I was looking at. Right. And that's a rounded tax rate of nine cents. Would result in the three seventy two.
What's the rate of the revenue neutral plus nine percent? What's that? Eight six?
I think so. Eight six five, I think.
Set a different level.
So then in setting the public hearing, we would make that recommendation for the public hearing to occur. Right, it's my knowledge. We haven't had that here. We've always diverted that. We wanted to have it here.
Yep.
So.
What I would suggest is that we would advertise the public hearing, the proposed tax rate of. Zero eight six. There'd be attached information about what the revenue neutral. Tax rate would be. My calculations on that. When he said it was point zero eight zero seven, I gave it point zero seven nine four. So that's.
So the county estimated higher.
But yes.
Need to vote on that?
That would help.
Oh, we have to vote to send. I have a motion to set the public.
And and yes, and you're by voting, you're also telling me that, yeah, this is what you could use for your tax rate. For the hearing.
I have a motion to approve the setting of the public hearing date for Elon Fire District tax rate for April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three at the rate of point zero eight six five. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Yeah, moving on to reports. We'll start with town manager.
As I mentioned, we had with the budget liaison committee earlier and. Working on. The. As numbers have continued to change, the balance budget I gave you back is February. So this is out of balance. That some of our revenue streams notably interest on our investments. Which increased every month since July. Month basis. Probably over about thirty seven dollars a month. So. We're going to increase that revenue line a little bit. Modify a couple of our expenditures lines and and. Be able to be a balanced budget. So that's the good news. And because of the the timing, I'll I'll remind everybody that. Thursday, the twentieth. Actually. Thursday, the twentieth is the first farmer's market in the season. Be down on West College. That's it from three to six. Twenty first Friday is our first music die to the season. With kind of a seasonal kickoff block party. Be. Small amusement activities on both Lebanon, well, West College, some inflatable games and things like that. It will package all ages, including inflatable axe throwing. So those scalps will be hurt during that game. There's.
inflatable skills.
That's right, inflatable skills. I think there's an inflatable. Tric- tricycle. Game and younger kids. Joe's got stuff planned down on on West College. So should be a. Fun week. Probably. Tell me what I forgot.
Two things. April twenty seventh is the multimodal open house at the farmer's market from three to five. We'd love to see folks there. Five thirty to seven thirty in this room, we'll be having an open house. So we want to hear about biking, walking and transit in Elon and whatever.
Really excited.
Place here or at the farmer's market?
Here for the open house. For the for the pop up.
Oh, okay.
And what I'm really excited about, which I said, Rich, please tell the council. May the third is hopefully our final L M O committee meeting. And we are going to just power through it. We're starting at one P M. We're projecting to start at one P M and go into the evening. And wrap up the L M O draft hopefully, so then we can have some public engagement. And bring it to the planning board and council and get adopted new code. Sorry, a little excited about that.
And since we're advertising things, we'll have after the next council meeting, I could have announced it then.
Get it too early.
On the twenty fifth is also downtown master plan for public meeting. That'll be down at the Pretty Life Center at Elon. The church.
Randy will come to you first.
Well, just I was going to say something about farmer's markets. I'm glad that was announced and. We don't have a whole lot of extra at this time around because. This the sustainability meeting because of my. With COVID. And so. I'm hoping to be able to start more. Actually, pretty much.
I mean, that's all that happened in the last week.
Yeah, that's all that happened last week.
Great time this weekend. It's a bunny hop. Good turnout as always. Kudos to the staff for all members getting together. Especially the volunteers that showed up. I'm always amazed when you have many young people to show up and. Passion about what the organization is and.
So we had our second meeting of the diversity, equity and belonging. We're growing slowly but steady. We're trying to get the word out through H O A's. To come and enjoy the meetings as well as get a lot of work done. So. Diane's done a great job of of developing those members and our membership is. And very knowledgeable. So we're excited to work with them.
As I mentioned last time, we're going to have teaming up with Elon Middle or Elon Elementary and Western Middle, putting art up here and I think they're going to hang it. As I mentioned last time, we're going to have uh teaming up with uh Elon Middle or Elon Elementary and Western Middle, putting art up here, and I think they're going to hang it tomorrow. So they're going to have it uh inside here uh and out in the foyer, be nice, and then we'll. So they will see it for all of April, and when everybody comes in here for all of our events moving forward, and a big reception at the end of. That, you know, I miss the bunny hop. One-year-old makes it a little difficult on a rainy, not fun, boring.
He still had a blast.
Sure you did.
Mark.
Uh want to thank Rich for all his hard work with the budget, it's a lot of moving parts, and I think we're. Some good recommendations to balance that, so thank you, all the staff for working on that.
Awesome, um I was able to enjoy the bunny hop, and I wanted to thank um. The Western Alaman students and the Elon University students who came out to volunteer. Of course, George and Carolyn Catalano, who received an award, well, recognition. And the tree at the Arbor Day celebration was planted in their honor, and of course, they were there, popping popcorn. Um for hours, pun hours. And also Elon University um donated three hundred books, so the the children who attended the event all got a free book, for the first three hundred people. Free book, so I think that was a really nice add as well, and you know, you fill them up with all the sugar and then you send them home to read a book. Um but I thought that was a really nice touch. Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
We want to stay. I'll make a motion, there you go.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Are adjourned?